And it's citizens' concerns.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. So there's a couple of items on the agenda and I'd like to have assurance that we can speak during those items, the betterment calculation for developers and the potential bylaw discussion. I'm hoping that we'll have a chance to talk then. If not, I can speak now.
You can speak then.
Okay. And so my concern tonight is 180 Newtown Road. And so this is a plan with a PCRC. And when I voted for the PCRC bylaw, I was told in an open meeting, town meeting, that it would not allow any more houses than would normally be allowed without the PCRC density bonus. And so at 180 Newtown, apparently instead of two modest-sized houses which would be allowed under regular zoning, there's eight huge mansions being proposed on, I think, four acres. So, and the land that's being offered to the town is wetlands that wouldn't be able to be built on, and so I think it's a terrible deal and we can do much better. And the planning board actually took a straw poll vote and was very much against the project. And then staff called the town lawyer in and told them that they couldn't deny it or that it would be difficult. And so magically, the whole planning board voted for the proposal then the next time. And one of the residents appealed the decision and the court actually sent it, remanded it back, leaving full flexibility for the planning board to reject the proposal. And so then planning staff came forward and said, "Well, all you should really do is just write a new sentence to satisfy the job judge and deny the project." And I feel like that's, you know, such a pro-developer stance and it's not what the neighbors and the people in town would want. And I feel like if the Board of Selectmen could urge the planning board to do what's best for the town as opposed to just trying to stay out of court and siding with the developer, that I think that we'd all be better off. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with citizens' concern? Okay. John, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you. We heard from the governor's office today, they released an additional supplement to Chapter 90 of 68,000. So we'll work with Cory to see what we can do with that. Every little bit helps. We're embarking on an exciting project this winter, I guess into the spring. Following the land use and economic development study that we did here and we had a presentation from Judy Barrett a few months ago, one of the recommendations was to look at ways to promote the community from an economic development standpoint. So we've engaged with a group that's going to help us do a few videos to put on our website and distribute otherwise to help promote what's great about Acton. And so we'll be working on that over the next few months and hopefully have something ready and filmed in May. So if you have any ideas on scenes to include in the video, please let us know.
Thank you, Madam Chair. After nine years as a select board member, I will not be a candidate for reelection this year. I first moved to Acton over 30 years ago and immediately applied for and was appointed to a vacant position on the Acton Housing Authority Board. Since then, I've pretty much been involved in serving on town committees or boards continuously for the last 30 years. That's a lot of night meetings. But my family and I have certainly got a lot more out of my efforts working with the town to help keep it such a great place to leave than I put into it. As I drive by the old high school, board the commuter rail at the new train station, visit the picnic pavilion or performing arts stage at Narrow Park, built with CPC improvements. And now with the new schools and the improvements to Kelly's Corner, I reflect on how rewarding it has been for me to work with the very talented town staff and all of our wonderful other town volunteers. And I certainly have said many times that working with local government is part of my DNA. I do it in my professional life as well as my private life. So I'm not going to be going away. I'll still be involved in some aspect of town government, just not as a select board member. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. We'll all miss you at the table. And I guess I can make an announcement that I will be running for reelection.
Thank you.
All right. Citizens' concern, chair update, town manager. Site plan, special permit, right on time. What? Okay, the Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on January 6, 2020 at 7:10 in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the application of Middlesex Savings Bank for the site plan special permit, 10:30, 19-476, under zoning bylaws section 10 dot 4 at 279 and 285 Main Street, map parcel F-3, 106 and F3-94. The application and accompanying plans can be expected at the Planning Division office and Town Hall during normal business hours.
All set?
All set.
My name's Adam Fandry. Thank you for having me here tonight. I head up the Corporate Real Estate Division for Middlesex Savings Bank. We're here tonight to present the proposed site plan for the Quill and Press Building. Middlesex Savings Bank has been a longstanding member in the community. We currently have two retail branches. Is that loud or is that just me? Is that loud? You okay? Is that better? Better? Okay. So we have two retail branches currently in Acton, one in West Acton and one just down the street from the Quill and Press Building. The team has been working on this project since April of 2019 and we're excited to be here and to talk about the site plan. Our intent is to relocate from our lease location to this new owned location, which will allow us to better serve the community over the long term. We've been working with the Hobels, which was the prior owner. They wrapped down, closed down their business through their retirement plan and we closed on the sale transaction at the end of last year. So Middlesex is now the owner of that site. This first slide here shows an aerial overview of the area. This is the Quill and Press Building. I don't know if people can see the pointer there. That's the Quill and Press Building, surrounded by red. Our current Middlesex Savings Bank is just across Community Way that also faces Main Street. Main Street is here, going this way, and Mass Ave is to the rear here. So I want to start off with some thank yous. We've worked closely with the town staff. They've done a great job for us and we appreciate all their help. Specifically, we want to thank the planning staff, Roland and Kristen, the engineering department, the water department, the fire department, the Board of Health, and we also know the Design Review Board. Also like to thank our partners. Here with me tonight is Bert Cory from DGT Engineering. Bert's going to get the difficult questions. I would like to get the easy questions. And then we have Lou Levine, who's our attorney, and Lou will get the very hard questions. This slide, so we talked about the orientation of the building. Of note here on this slide is the existing Quill and Press Building. As you can see from this slide, the Quill and Press Building, which is substantially larger than the building we're proposing, and then there's all the impervious surface, all the paved area around it. There's parking in the front of the Quill and Press, there's parking all down the side of the Quill and Press Building. So this project will substantially reduce the built environment on this lot. This is an aerial shot here. Again, this is Main Street to the top, Mass Ave is to the rear here. This shows the new site plan. Our intent is to demolish the Quill and Press Building. So referencing the previous slide, the Quill and Press Building was right about here. So we'll demolish that much larger structure that was here and then we'll move the building, a much smaller building, to the left side of the lot over here. The building is again oriented towards Main Street, up this direction, the same way that the Quill and Press Building was oriented. There's a pedestrian plaza, pedestrian plaza in front of the building here. There's a parking lot to the side of the building. There's a planned drive-up to the rear, which is accessed this way. There's a drive-up ATM and drive-up teller in the rear of the building. And there's a fairly robust landscaping plan that you can see here. So there's the plaza in the front, there's significant buildout of plantings here in the islands, there's barrier trees planted along, along the property lines, and there's a significant amount of shade trees, there's bicycle parking on the site. This next slide makes reference to the Kelly's Corner Plan. This is really just a zoomed-out version of what we previously saw. You can see Main Street here, Mass Ave running along the rear. And the placement of this new building really is in line with what we believe is the Kelly's Corner project plan. There's reduced curb cuts to the site. Currently, there's a curb cut here and a curb cut here, so we've eliminated curb cuts. The lot has frontage along Mass Ave back here. There is no proposed access from Mass Ave. The access to the lot will be just from Main Street here. The project complies with the current zoning in use as a retail bank. We're not seeking, it conforms to the zoning bylaws and we're not seeking any variances for this project. We've worked with town staff and they've compiled about 12 comments. We've addressed those comments, each of those comments, and I believe all of that is documented in the recent memo from the town planner, which memorializes the comments and the action items that have been taken to address all of them. And from this, this is also a good slide. It shows, again, the same view that we saw previously, but it really gives you a sense of how much green space is on the lot. Previously, we focused on the built environment here, but you can see the whole rear of the lot, which abuts Mass Ave in the back, will remain undeveloped as green space. And you can see how much less built environment you have on this plan versus the previous plans here, or the existing conditions, I should say. The next four slides show various renderings, that's a little washed out there, so show various renderings of the property. So we worked with regard to the landscape plan, the site plan, and the overall architecture of the site, the massing and scaling of the building with the Design Review Board. We had a couple of sessions with them and we revised the plan to reflect their comments. There was modifications made to the vestibule area here, there was modifications made to the cupola here, there was modifications made to the windows in front, there were modifications made to the plantings in the front, all which have the intent of reducing the use of irrigation water on the site. This site is staring, or looking at the site from across the street. The Quill and Press Building is currently located here. The new building would be moved to where the Quill and Press parking area is, if you looked at the site from the street, on the right-hand side. This is an alternate view, which is moving slightly down the street, closer to the gas station, from the front, from Main Street, a different view. This is a view from the parking area, a little bit closer to the building, which would be the approach for pedestrians, bicyclists, or people, motorists that are parking their cars there on the site. And this is a view of the building from the rear. It shows the drive-up banking lanes, one for ATMs, one for face-to-face banking. It shows the parking area, which will be on the side of the building here. And I pause right here and talk about our timeline. We acquired the building at the end of the year, end of last year. Our desire is to break ground in the spring, which will allow us to open in late December of 2020. So I may be pause there and see if there's any questions I could address.
And I think, David?
Yes, sir.
On one of your slides, you showed...
I can hop back, which one?
The one that showed kind of an aerial view, right there was good. The sidewalks that go down, I assume that these...
These ones here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why those sidewalks don't go to Mass Ave?
They, there's a significant grade here on Mass Ave. It's, Bert, what's that, probably an eight or 10-foot difference, substantial. So it's really, it's very steep right here. The zoning bylaws call for connectivity to adjacent lots for pedestrian access, and that's what we've shown here. It's a little bit premature to talk to the other business owners, but this pathway, again, this would be green space here. So we would like to, there's a set of stairs right here, which comes up from the Starbucks area right there. So it comes up here, that's private property. We certainly would like to work with the building owner here to connect. We would construct this path and connect it. We did a similar arrangement with a site license with Caruth Capital, where we provided connectivity between Office Park so people could use the amenities in the Office Park. So we would endeavor to do that.
Yeah, that would be great, because if you were able to work with them, there would be a way to get through to Mass Ave, which would be...
Absolutely.
Which would be excellent. The other thing is, can you tell me about the energy efficiency of this building?
The, we really didn't focus on energy efficiency. It certainly meets the energy code. It's a smaller building. I think the previous building was about 6,000 square feet circa 1960. So this will be a high-efficiency, well-insulated, you know, highly efficient windows, highly efficient HVAC system.
I looked for information in the materials for that and I didn't see that level of detail. Is there something that, you know, some supplemental material you could get us? Because, you know, one of my things here is that any building, your building now is going to last 50 years. And, you know, given the state of the world's climate, you know, I think this is a very important consideration. So I'd be interested in what you have planned.
Absolutely. One of the things that I previously pursued was a certification in LEED, which is an energy efficiency certification. So this site will, you know, we generally don't, the guidelines for the site plan don't call out the specifications for the energy efficiency of the building. That would certainly be located in the construction documents, though, so we could call that all out. And that's required by code and to meet the state energy code.
Right. Even if a building is not LEED certified, you know, having it not burn natural gas, for example, to me is important. So anyway, I'd be interested in getting, in seeing that information. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, sir.
Peter?
So I'm looking at the Water District's comments. You talked about irrigation. They have a concern about that. They want drought-tolerant landscaping to be explored instead of the proposed landscape design. I'm not sure I understand exactly what that means, but can you talk to that?
I think, really, they're just trying to, similar to the energy question, to make sure that we have an efficient landscape. We went down that path with the Design Review Board and I think we addressed the comment. So we did change out a lot of the plantings so that they are drought-resistant and will consume less water on-site.
System will be operated to apply no more than one inch of supplemental irrigation over a period of two days per week. Is that part of your plan?
Correct.
Okay. And they like polyethylene pipes instead of copper, so, okay. I don't think I have any further questions, thank you.
Great, thanks, sir.
Dean?
Yeah, and in my role as liaison to the Design Review Board, I did sit in for one of your hearings and it does look like you've incorporated most of their recommendations. One question that I had that I saw in the staff review comments was a question about how many parking spaces. I think you were going to go for 15. I think the advice from staff was to go with eight. What did you end up with?
Sure, I think we're at 15. We had traded subsequent correspondence relative to the parking counts. I think the zoning guidelines in this district specify a minimum number of parking spaces versus a maximum, which I think it is in other districts. So we certainly meet the minimum number of parking spaces. We currently staff at six folks, so full-time, you have six associates parked there. So if we had eight parking spots, we'd only have room for two, for two customers. So that would push all of our traffic out to neighbors and street parking. So with 15 parking spots, less the six for staff, that's nine for customers, which we think is sufficient. And certainly not excessive. Again, if you look at the Quill and Press site, correct me if I'm wrong, Bert, but it's 30-ish spots?
Well, it's 28.
28 spots at the Quill and Press. So we're almost cutting it in half.
Okay, thank you. I'm a customer of your branch in West Acton, most times...
Thank you, thank you for the business, we appreciate.
When, most times when I go in there, I see that there's probably eight parking spaces filled and you do have the option there of on-street parking, which is not available here. So I think probably a 15 is probably a more realistic number. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Okay, Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I'm very excited to see if I understood correctly the path to Mass Ave. Is that correct? Is that going to be part of the permit or is that just a suggestion? I would like very much to see connectivity, the walkability. Right now, that's not accessible to walkers and so I would like to see any permit to require that to be accessible to pedestrians. The Mass Ave section, it looks to me like it's cleared. And if that's the case, would that be lawn? I'd rather have what's there now, maybe just to cut through for the path, but the bushes that are there now seem to be fine to me and certainly drought-tolerant since they've lived on their own. I'd like to see a bench out by the street. In fact, I'd like to have any special permits that come forward, as much as I'm in favor of economic development. I also see the special permit process as an opportunity to get things that we need. And that bench that is in West Acton in front of the Middlesex Savings is used quite a bit. There's a lot of people, especially as the population ages, you know, a bench every, you know, 30, 40 feet is greatly appreciated. I'm getting a lot of questions about, well, I'm also in favor of not having gas, which I think that Jim perhaps will be speaking about. I'm getting questions from people about West Acton branch of the Middlesex Savings. And I spoke with the managers there and they said that they intend to stay. So I'd just like to hear again that this is not to take the place of the West Acton branch. Thank you.
Any other, any other comments?
The pathway is part of the site plan. It's part of your approval, the pathway that we show on the plan. The ability to connect it to the adjoining owners is something that we're going to have to negotiate with their willingness to negotiate. We've indicated tonight that we're willing to provide them access and hopefully they'll provide access. And, you know, I think you're all familiar with the steps that Adam was mentioning. So...
Yeah, it's got to be accessible, right? I mean, it has to be designed to be accessible, doesn't it? I mean, I don't know how you deal with steps with accessibility issues, but is the pathway as it's designed now that connects to the back portion of that other property? Is it...
The pathway now, I'm sorry. The pathway now is not accessible. It's a set of stairs, again, due to the grade, a significant grade here that comes up. One of the things that we did look at in previous designs was an accessible pathway to get, that would basically end up paving this entire area to create switchbacks to meet, I think it was a 8% grade, Bert?
Bert? It was around that.
10%, yes, 10% grade. So you'd have, so we would take this park and then basically pave the park to create...
So you need to get a, you need to get a variance or something from the building code to build a non-accessible path?
There's, the path would be accessible on our property. We could make the grades work to here. Again, it's coming down this section here that would not be accessible. I think there's accessible paths around the Kelly's Corner area. I think the intent was to provide some green space and if we provide a switchback with railings, it would be an enormous serpentine and really not used. I don't think it would really be practical to expect a handicapped person to switch back up through here. I think they would prefer to take a more subtle path around the area.
We discussed this somewhat at length with staff and, you know, we're providing and reserving the path so it doesn't get built on. And I think this is comparable to a typical subdivision plan where you provide access to adjoining land, but you can't necessarily make the adjoining landowner agree to give you the access. But we provided for it. You know, hopefully in the future, something can be worked out with the adjoining property and obviously if it is, you know, somebody will have to come back to the town and try and work it out relative to handicapped accessibility or whatever is required. But we're reserving this area and it's part of your approval. It's about the most we can do that makes, you know, any sense. And I think, you know, the serpentine is not going to serve anybody's purpose and it's going to eat up all that green space. You know, so I think this is a well-thought-out plan. And early on, there was a proposal to have two driveways. You know, staff indicated here are the existing Kelly's Corner's plans, you know, and so Middlesex revised their plan substantially to comport with the Kelly's Corner traffic improvements. So we weren't just impeding that after the fact. So we've changed the design based on Kelly's Corner, I think, you know, and staff's comments. So, that's it.
And I think there was a comment about a bench. We generally do, like in West Acton, we do have benches in front of the properties. We just renovated and conquered. There's a bench in front of that property, so we're happy to put benches out here. Again, I think that's the level of detail that would be in the, in the construction drawings when we permit.
If you want to make that a condition, you know, satisfactory location to the Planning Department or something like that, we're okay with that. You know, it's not a problem.
And the intent is really to have pedestrian access here. That's the whole intent of this green space here with the bicycle racks here and the space in front versus having parking in front of the building.
To meet the Kelly's Corner desire and the general desire, the zoning, the parking was moved, you know, away from the front. There's about 7,500 square feet, I think I'm correct, Bert, of reduced asphalt?
7,800.
7,800 square feet, you know, so that's as well as about half the number of parking spaces. So it's definitely an improvement. I'm not in any way saying anything bad about Quill and Press, but it was obviously built a long time ago and it used to be a furniture shop before it was a Quill and Press. So, you know, we're just updating it and you can see the amount of green space that's here, as opposed to somebody just bought it and, you know, moved in and used it for whatever use they wanted to use it for today, which they could do, I guess.
Other comments?
Hi, Jim Snyder Grant, F Moon Hill. So I recognize there's a strange flaw in our bylaws that we can't actually require that the applicant not use natural gas, but I just wanted to follow up on Selectman Martin's comments about it. There is a gas connection now shown on the plan, presumably it's the existing gas connection, but it's there. And to avoid using it, you can avoid having an explosive poisonous gas coming into your building, which I think your workers and your customers will appreciate. And you have a chance to anticipate increases in gas prices and the availability of electricity such that you can reduce your operating costs significantly. Of course, a modern electric system would be providing both heating and cooling. Right now, it looks like you have a mechanical system scheduled for the roof that are possibly the air conditioning system. Yeah, sometimes those kind of little, cute little cupolas are designed to hide the chillers up on the roof. And so having a single system is going to be more straightforward in terms of maintenance and it's going to provide you a route forward to lower operating costs in the future. And particularly without that funny little cupola on there. A well-insulated building with good designed airflow is going to be able to be covered, the electricity for running that system is going to be able to be covered by rooftop solar. So I think you have a chance to present a... So I think you have a chance to present a model that follows on the models of the, the new fire station and the new school, and being a net-zero building that doesn't use natural gas. And I think it would be a wonderful stake for Middlesex Savings Bank, a wonderful story for them to present to other businesses and other buildings that are coming into Acton in the future. So, thank you for considering that.
So energy efficiency is always top of mind for the bank. We have an eighty thousand square foot operation center in Westboro. That entire rooftop is covered with solar panels. We purchase solar off-site that is applied back to the grids in which we use it. So most of our retail locations, we are applying solar credits from those power purchase agreements back to the retail sites. We talked about lead, lead accreditation for buildings. With a highly diverse portfolio of properties, half-leased, half-owned, multiple generations of buildings, it's difficult to apply a lead certification to those existing buildings and really achieve or move the needle towards energy efficiency. So we definitely use best practices to reduce our overall energy cost, and I think the design as proposed meets the, the energy code and is a highly efficient building. We would certainly love to, to put a flat-roofed building in here, you know, without gables, without a cupola. These are all improvements that were part of the discussions with the designer review board and part of the design guidelines for the, for the region. It certainly would be a lot, lot cheaper for the bank to put in a flat-roofed building. So we would be happy to chop that roof off, if the board is so inclined.
Other comments?
Sure. Do, do you know if the heating system is natural gas-based?
Bert, it is, it is gas. There's gas, there's gas on the site, and the new system is natural gas.
And assuming your, your roof stays the way, the way it is, you know, is it conceivable that you, you could go to a heat pump-based system and not burn natural gas?
Um, there's, I don't think a heat pump system would fuel a building this size. You talk about a geothermal system, or you...
Well, you could do either. You know...
As I tell my boss, it's all just time and money. Everything is time and money. So all things are possible, but I think in the realm of what's a reasonable design, and certainly something we're struggling with is between the acquisition cost of the site and the construction cost of this building. We, we definitely have made concessions to, to make it an attractive building for the community and a sustainable building.
Any other comments from the audience?
Yes, sir.
I'm Chuck Frampton. My wife and I live across the street, and so we're appreciative of the, from the design to us, it looks very pleasant versus looking over at a flat-roofed building. We also are a client of Middlesex, so full disclosure.
And you appreciate your business as well, Chuck.
Yeah, thanks. But that's true. So that's our comments to it, in terms of how they've worked with the planning committee to make something that looks pleasant. We're grateful for that.
I would like to ditto part of what my husband said, but I really want to extend a, a big compliment in terms of the site. I will tell you as kind of a little bit of humor that we were shopping at Roach Brothers about ten years ago. We lived in Concord. We raised our family there. And we were coming up the street, and we both looked at each other and said, can you imagine anyone in their right mind moving in there to those condominiums? Well, we did. And we did because we wanted our last of four children to go to Acton Boxborough. And it did, we did fulfill the dream that we wanted him to go there instead of Concord-Carlisle. So I'd like to just kind of extend that, that it has really been important for us to live where we do, but it has been a tremendous eyesore to look across at dumpsters in the way that the property has been kept. And so we really look forward to being able to look for my kitchen sink and wave and be able to see you and see your tellers. So thank you for this.
Alyssa Nichol, I live on School Street, and I'm also a Middlesex Bank customer. This is a very pretty design, and I trust, I have a lot of faith in the design review board in town. My only question, since we're talking about energy efficiency, is, and also the Kelly's Corner plans, why all of the trees are surrounding the parking lot rather than the building? Because shade trees reduce energy costs of a building, heating, oh, sorry, cooling by twenty to thirty percent, and also blocking wind that also saves on the heating costs in the wintertime. And if our goal is to make Kelly's Corner a vibrant, walkable, beautiful space, I know there's a lot of trees along the sidewalk, so I don't really understand why there aren't any trees in front of, along the, the main street part.
Thank you for the comments. Appreciate the support for the architecture of the building. I think the, one of the many hats that we're at the bank is I head up the corporate real estate group. I also head up the facilities group, so we will maintain the landscape for you. And I also head up the security department. I've had the unfortunate pleasure of having the bank robbed twice while I've been there in two years. When my phone starts, I start getting texts at four PM, three PM in the afternoon, that's when I get nervous. The reason why there aren't trees around the building is we've worked specifically to increase the sightlines to the building for safety. I think there's a lot of questions around energy efficiency of the building. To, you know, it is a highly efficient building. The state energy code is very restrictive on the energy consumption for electricity, for, for heating, for cooling, for insulation. We're certainly meeting all those, all those standards and then some. To put things in perspective, this is a thirty-seven hundred square foot building, which is incredibly small. I'd say a lot of the houses that people live in, in this room, are bigger than this building. So it's, it's not a tremendously large building, but it is highly efficient.
Again, on the issue, and I understand Mr. Martin's, you know, concern about gas, but, and I don't want to be adversarial, but, you know, site plan goes so far, and, you know, I don't think site plan can take into the kind of energy source you're using if otherwise you meet the energy code, which in Acton is fairly strict, and in the Commonwealth is fairly strict. So, and just not for this project, but this, as Adam indicated, is about thirty-seven hundred square feet. That's maybe a little bit smidgen, bigger than the average single-family house that's being built in Acton, but not substantially bigger than the average. And there's no restriction as to the kind of energy that's used in single-family construction. And I'm sure the building department or Roland would tell you that probably virtually a majority, if not ninety percent, if more, are using, are being built with gas presently today, just the way it is. So I don't know what authority, I mean, this, you know, really, honestly, if any, a town has to regulate your concerns. You know, can you restrict the kind of energy that's used? I don't know. I'm not going to opine on that. But this is essentially what, you know, Bob the Builder could be building down the street as a single-family home, and, you know, there wouldn't be site plan review. There would just be, you know, submission to the building department for energy code compliance, and it would probably be less efficient, you know, than this is because the bank has a different interest than, you know, the builder has. So, we appreciate what you're saying. I just, there's only so much, so far site plan can go, and I'm not, you know, you know, I'm not in any way doing that in an adversarial way. I'm just saying it is what it is, and this is, you know, we think the zoning compliance, and, you know, it's definitely met the terms. And as, you know, mentioned, if we were to even look at the possibility of these alternate things would be a total redesign of the building, which then puts us kind of at odds with your process, which is to go to the design review board, get them to, you know, work with you to put a, a building that has an architectural style that the design review board thinks is appropriate, and now we would be totally, you know, changing that architectural style to meet, you know, some other master. That's it. But you can make your decision accordingly.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not yet looking for a net-zero building. We've, we've suggested in other developments in, in town that the people avoid the use of natural gas. And in my mind, building a new building today, you know, in 2020, where you're basically saying you're going to be burning natural gas for the next fifty years is unconscionable, right? And, and a heat pump does not take any more space than an air conditioner, right? And so you're already, the building's already air-conditioned, obviously. It's a, it's a, it's a change. And, you know, I'm not trying to twist your arm, but I'm trying to suggest that going to a heat pump-based building is better than locking this building into burning natural gas for the next fifty years.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the audience? All right, Dean?
Yeah, I think regarding Ms. Nichol's comment about tree planting around there, I believe that there's been some space allocated for more trees along the sidewalk, specifically so that would be in compliance with the new Kelly's Corner plan. I think the, the whole design of this was, was made with that in mind, so I think there will be trees going in there. It's just not on the plan. It'll actually, those new plantings will probably be within the right-of-way of Main Street.
You're correct, sir. Thank you. We did have plantings in front of the building. We removed them subsequent to staff comments, but you're right, there, we wouldn't have foundation plants, but there are plants, or, I'm sorry, trees intended for the front of the building with Kelly's Corner. Yes, sir.
John?
Just to echo David Martin's comments, I mean, we try, you know, we take the climate change issue seriously, and it's, it's not something we could defer to 2100. We've really got to deal with it now. And we look at things, what can we affect, you know, locally? We've made real efforts in acquiring additional parking spaces in the commuter rail lot to get people off route to, to provide them with reliable parking. And in both of our recent capital projects, the new Gates Douglas Twin School and the North Acton Fire Station, they will be doing, you know, geothermal heating. And we can't require you under our zoning bylaw to do that, but we would ask you to have further consideration if you could take it back to your offices and see if accommodations could be made to, you know, go geothermal and, and really stay away from gas.
Definitely. We can, we can certainly discuss it. I'm certainly not the expert on mechanical design, so we can engage our mechanical consultant.
Peter?
The gas issue is not just a climate change issue. We have done a survey in town of leaks of our, of the methane leaks from the gas infrastructure. They're killing our trees. They're poisoning our atmosphere. There are certain towns that have passed bylaws that prohibit, Brookline, I guess, prohibit any more hookups to gas. We haven't gone that far, but we do have a sustainability policy that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen that encourages using sustainable practices, which we would consider trying to stay away from gas. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Judith Ehrenstein, Three Gregory Lane, Acton. I'm the coordinator of Mothers Out Front, and I just ran in. I missed a little bit because I was watching online, but I, if I'm repeating my, what's already been said, I'm sorry. Acton has over two hundred gas leaks, and three years ago, when I started this, we had about over two hundred gas leaks, and they've been fixing them, but there are still a lot of gas leaks. So I feel like that needs to be taken into account, partly because this leaking gas is a greenhouse gas, and you all know this. Maybe you don't. It's a greenhouse gas that's more potent than carbon dioxide by eighty-five times over the next twenty years. So this is an issue that you can't just say, oh, you know, we're following the lead. It's not enough to follow lead anymore. You have to make choices that are a little harder. But the fact is, is that the fire station and the new school both are doing air source or ground source heat pumps, and they work. And old information will tell you that it doesn't work. It doesn't keep it warm in the, in the winter, and it does. So I think that it's very important that you reconsider the gas hookup. I think it's, the gas has passed. We're done. And we're hoping that eventually in Acton, maybe there will be no, no hookups, as in Brookline and also other states, other cities in the country are doing that as well. I think that's it.
Thank you.
I didn't really write notes. Thanks.
Tara Fredericks, one last comment? So I am also a customer of Middlesex Savings, and I would be willing to donate the interest on my holdings in my account, which would be, I think, about a tenth of the cost of the, the heat source pumps. I would hate to have to enact a ban on new hookups, but certainly willing to work on that. I hope that, that applicants come forward and do it voluntarily, because I think the relative cost is very low and the payback is very quick. Thank you.
Okay.
We just, we learned in, in doing our, our research on the fire station project that the outlay was more upfront for the geothermal system. You made that money back in about ten or twelve years. It's much cheaper over the long haul, so I think that's something else you might think about.
Definitely. Some, we'll definitely take a look at it.
Any other questions? Do you want to hold, or do you want to make a decision?
I'm Kim Castens from Pope Road, and I am also a Middlesex Bank customer. I'm amazed at how many of us there are here. I'm also a geologist, and I just wanted to add to the background on the decision about whether to make a gas hookup, that you should expect that the price of natural gas will escalate extremely fast because of the rapid depletion of fracked natural wells. And so when you do your accounting for how fast your payback will be, you should take into account an assumption that natural gas prices will become much, much more expensive.
I, I think we need to vote to close the public hearing and then deliberate.
Is that a motion?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Deliberation.
I mean, I guess I'll, I'll move that we approve the site plan for the Middlesex Bank with a suggestion that they strongly consider alternatives to gas infrastructure. And I guess we could put in a condition that they put a couple of benches out in the front was, I heard the applicant say they'd accept that, so.
Motion, is, that's a motion? Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Closing the warrant?
So the, the board opened the warrant recently, and this item is asking the board to close the warrant. We did, we have received two citizen petitions as of right now. One was about a zoning change in, on Main Street, 525 Main Street, and the other was Weatherby Street. So the, the purpose of closing the warrant traditionally here in Acton is that is the time where, the town will no longer accept citizen petitions. Town boards and committees would still work on any articles that are underway and add those to the warrant. As of today, we have thirty-three articles on the warrant. Many of those are regular items. A few are related to board goals. So that's the action that is before you tonight.
Okay. Any questions, John?
Um...
In, in, in 2019, we closed the warrant at the, at the end of January, and that date was set... In 2019, we closed the warrant at the end of January, and that date was set several weeks prior to that date. And I would suggest we do that again this year, either the 27th or the 31st, to allow for any additional citizen petitions that, you know, may come in. We closed the 2019 special town meeting warrant, I think, kind of abruptly. I was a bit bothered by that, and it did come back to bite us with an extra special town meeting that we had at a cost of probably in excess of $8,500. So I would suggest anytime during the, I think our next meeting is the 27th, so I would move that we close the warrant on January 27, 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Maybe ask a question. So we're voting on this now to close it three weeks hence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We will have to take a vote at that meeting, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Are we taking the vote at this meeting, or are we taking a vote at that meeting?
No, we're taking a vote now to officially close it on January 27, much like we did last year.
Okay, I was just trying to clarify that.
Yeah, okay.
John?
That's certainly something that we could implement. Would you want to do at 11:59 PM, or would you, how would you like to dictate and close the business?
Monday, January 20, is it the 27th at 11:59 PM?
All right.
Motion made and seconded. Tara?
Just logistically speaking, if you're closing it at midnight, people can only get signatures in to the town clerk by 5:00, so I would say close of business that same day. Also, I appreciate having a time certain in the future, because that keeps us from having to scurry and hand in language that hasn't been reviewed by town council, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? John?
The close of business concept does have a nice ring to it. The close of business concept, I think, does make sense, if it's something the board's willing to consider.
So I would offer a friendly amendment, that we change 11:59 to close of business that day.
So accepted.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, amended, and accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Town meeting, citizens petition.
Yeah, that was an agenda item I asked to be put on. It's, the warrants are under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen, and I was very unclear about what our policy is. I had understood it that citizen petitions can come in for review by town council as to legality and how they're drafted, and suggestions for improvements, and that could, I guess, only, I learned during the, I think it was Tara's article for the, sort of put a hold on the sewer project until there was further studies done. And since our petition was filed, we, it couldn't be amended. And then I said, well, was it our policy beforehand, before the petitions actually came in to look at them in draft form? And we were really unclear. Tara sent me an email shortly before Christmas that she was contemplating a citizen's petition to place restrictions on sewer expansion, and ahead of circulating her petition, she asked, could she submit a possible petition for review? So I dropped a note to town council to that effect, and Nina Pickering Cook wrote back that typically it's up to the town manager's office how much assistance town council provides to residents pursuing citizens' petitions, and that she suggested consulting with John. But what she said in general, her law firm provides a cursory review of legality as opposed to actual help in drafting, but there is a range. So I think as a matter of good practice that we should have town council help both in the drafting of citizen, the review of citizens' petitions and in their drafting, as well as checking on their legality. Because I think with all citizens' petitions, they should be clear, and the implications of those, you know, petitions are understood by everyone. So, you know, I bring this up for discussion and perhaps a motion tonight, that we, you know, put in place a process for John to implement as manager, that, you know, would include that citizens' petitions be submitted by the manager to town council to review for their legality and assistance in drafting. So when the petitions, you know, go before town meeting, you know, they're very understandable, and the implications of the petitions are clear. And, you know, I want to avoid situations where, yeah, they're only non-binding petitions. The board doesn't really like them. If they lose, well, we don't have to go any further, but if they pass, you know, we're faced with a political decision that it may have passed town meeting by a wide vote, and we have to give credence to it. And if we're giving credence to it, I want to give credence to a properly drafted petition.
Peter?
If I remember correctly, I think the special town meeting, we had to ban recreational marijuana in town. Now, the statute talked about the ways to actually put that in place, but that citizens' group that was put together and drafted that petition did work with Steve Ledoux and town council's office to make sure that the petition was in proper order and that it, you know, would get accomplished, what the goal of the thing was, which is, I think, what everybody hopes the petitions will do. So I agree with that.
John?
Yes, I think that we didn't get any requests for providing assistance for that article that you just mentioned. We did get, the folks that were working on the plastic bag ban last year did ask us for help, and we gave them help. So we haven't turned anyone away that I'm aware of.
No, I just, I'm not suggesting you turned anything away or were unkind to anyone, but, you know, I think we should make it clear to the citizenry that we are open to assist in, you know, the reviewing and processing of, you know, of citizen petitions. That's, I'm not suggesting that we give any citizen a blank check, that you could spend $5,000 of town funds talking to a town council about it. That would be under your auspices, but we should, you know, take advantage of it and make sure it's done right.
May I speak?
Yes.
I think that, so just from a person who's submitted several petitions, I've had very good luck going through the town manager's office. I think that you actually save town money by reviewing things ahead of time for the reasons that John already stated. But relative to the turnaround time and how long it takes, for especially before the warrant closes, not knowing when the warrant's going to close, this is all very difficult for a potential petitioner. So understanding when there's a time certain, or pretty certain, that the warrant will close helps a lot, because then we can relax and, you know, give John some time to get a cursory review, as opposed to trying to pester him, you know, for a 24-hour review when we all of a sudden see the closing of the warrant on the agenda. So I appreciate a process that is in place, that's recognized as being helpful, not necessarily overly burdensome, and where that line is, I think, has traditionally been drawn at two or three reviews, and an opinion relative to phraseology. And often, at least in my experience, town councils come back with a bunch of questions. Do you want this to be binding or not? And so there's a little bit of a back and forth on that. So I think that it will save money in the long run and help the citizens feel as though their government is responsive to their citizen petitions. Thank you.
John?
Yes.
I think that we should definitely put some bright lines around all this. I think that I would prefer to see if we give this a little bit of thought and maybe get some suggestions from the town manager and from council, as far as what the financial implications of this are. Also, as far as the, you know, in the run-up for the next couple of months, town council is very busy reviewing things that have been initiated by the selectmen and by town staff, so I don't want to impact that drastically. Also, I could foresee situations where a citizen's petition might actually pit one neighborhood against another, and I don't think the town wants to get involved in that sort of a situation, providing counsel to one side that might decide, you know, whatever. One neighborhood might decide to ban red houses or something. So I would feel much more comfortable if we had a little time over the next couple of weeks for the town manager to come up with some guidelines that he feels comfortable with and that our council feels comfortable with, and then bring it back.
David?
Yeah, I also presume that any process here would have to be optional on the part of a petitioner, right? Because I don't think, state law outlines how someone does a, you know, a petition for, to put an article on the town meeting warrant. I don't think we could interfere with that. So this would be kind of optional help at some level.
That's correct. Yeah, they could just file it and say, we're not looking for assistance, but I think we should make it known that assistance is available so these petitions are, come out right.
Yeah, I do agree with Dean that maybe we should have, you know, to try to draft something, whatever, before we vote on it.
Okay.
All right, so we'll postpone the decision on this.
So would we ask John in consultation with Nina to try to come up with, you know, a workable process that the two of them could use successfully from year to year?
That's something that I definitely can work on, and we can be prepared, or I can be prepared to share some initial thoughts at the next meeting, or whenever you'd like to hear them.
Good. Thank you. Okay, CPC.
Can I comment?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I'm Kim Castens, and this conversation is very timely for me, because the Green Acton Water Committee has been working with the Acton Water District on procedures for citizens' petition articles for their annual meetings, and so we're trying to understand what those rules should be. And I very much appreciate the idea that there would be legal counsel available as an optional step, and so I really appreciate both your suggestion that it should be there, Selectman Benson, and that it should be optional, Selectman Martin. But in my trying to understand what to comment next week at the Acton Water District commissioners, I called the clerk today and asked for the guidelines on how to do citizens' petition for the town, and it's telling me here, the town encourages petitioners to consult with an attorney to ensure the wording is in proper form to be considered by town meeting. The town attorney is not available to the public for this purpose. So does this, has this already been decided? Is this still under consideration, or, like, do you want this?
Is that the water district's attorney?
No, this is from the town of Acton clerk.
I'd like to speak to that, because I have some information.
Okay. The town encourages...
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the town of Acton, this is not the water district.
Right. Okay.
I was informed, oh, sorry, no, I already have it, I already have it. I already have it.
All right, we're going to consider this, Tara, and we'll talk with John, and we'll bring it back.
Thank you. I was just going to say that the, I was told that the difference is, is that the town council can't advocate, they can only discuss the legality of the language. Thank you.
Okay. CPC.
Thank you. At the previous meeting in December, the board reviewed the applications from town entities to the Community Preservation Committee for consideration for CPA funding in this next cycle, and we discussed that some additional information was needed to help the board make the decision on which ones you want to advocate or send forward to CPC. So we prepared this packet of information that's before you, and I think it's published online. I can go through it quickly, and you can stop, or please feel free to stop me on any of these that you have questions about. $400,000 for open space set aside, that is an appropriation that's requested every year. Community housing program, it's similar. They, the group asks for funding every year to help support initiatives for affordable housing. The highway department, DPW is proposing a $15,000 restoration of historic street scapes, which is, and then we have the highway, the chimney next door at the library, some of the chimney, the chimney and some of the other brickwork, including the front steps on that building, are needums of repointing, and it's a historic structure. So the mortar, restoration of the mortar is considered historic preservation, so that's why this project was being requested. There isn't funding available otherwise to do that, to do this work this year. The monument across the street, the Isaac Davis Monument, had some work done on it within the last decade or two, but it is seeing signs of deterioration, and this project is meant to repoint it and restore it again, to make sure that that monument, which is pretty significant to our community, maintains in good shape. There are some photographs included of some, we went up with a drone and took pictures of it to get a better look at it. East Acton Village Green is $49,000 to create a pocket park over on next to the rail trail, near the Ice House Pond. This is a project that was in the works about 10 years ago and was put on hold while the rail trail was being completed. And the Sports Pavilion Phase Two, we have enough funding to do Phase One of the Sports Pavilion, which will provide a fully accessible bathroom facility for Miracle Field, which will also be used by Narrow Park. This funding request is to supplement the existing funding to do Phase Two, which would be the building next to it, the South Building, it's being called, which will have other uses for recreation programming and public safety needs at the park. This project has been ongoing for quite a while. When it was first envisioned, the Natural Resources folks requested $650,000 to do the entire project. At the time, they were awarded, I believe, $350,000 or thereabouts, which wasn't enough to complete the work. So we've been working very hard to find other funding sources to do as much as we can in the meantime. We were fortunate to get an earmark in the FY '20 state budget this year of $150,000. The Miracle Field nonprofit organization has done some fundraising, and they're going to contribute more than $100,000 to this project. And so, as I said, we do have enough to complete the one building. This extra 400 is to complete the second building. The Gardner Field project is something that's gotten a lot of support from the business community in West Acton. There's been a strong desire from that community to see Gardner Field enhanced, and this would be Phase One, understanding, you know, what a feasibility study would look like for what we can do out there. And the last item is administrative support, which is something we do every year to help run the program.
Peter?
Could speak to the 53 River Street proposal. That's a proposal to fund making the dam safe. We found after we put our committee together that the dam is unsafe, and the state has required that we fix it by the end of 2020. What happened was, we got the initial engineer feasibility study a few days before the deadline for submitting to the CPC. The application was submitted for the number that the engineers had put in for the entire scope of the project, 966... for the entire scope of the project, 966,000. That's at least double the next highest request on this list. Then we met with the engineers shortly thereafter. Well, also the manager had put into the town budget $138,000 to help get a grant that the town would have to contribute a portion of in order to get the money. So we not only have the 966,000 that was submitted to the CPC, which is the total amount, we have the $138,000 proposed in the current town budget. Then we met with the engineers. They, they told us that it would be at least a year to 18 months to just do the design and permitting portion of the project. Actually fixing the dam only takes two months, so 18 months to design and permit it, mostly because the Army Corps of Engineers doesn't even look at a permit and application until six months after you file it, I guess. And obviously, there's a lot of permitting that needs to be done with removing a dam. So that's $100,000 to do the design and permitting. They like to put a 20% contingency on these numbers. They're very preliminary. So I initially had talked to the committee about just going with the town budget and withdrawing the CPC application. But after that meeting, I talked to the town manager. He pointed out there were other priorities that could be funded in the town budget that they couldn't fund if the $138,000 was removed from that, the town budget. So we have a meeting of the River Street Committee tomorrow night. What I would ask the selectmen to consider is reducing this 966 down to the 120 for permitting and design, and freeing up the $138,000 that's in the town budget to fund other priorities that need to be done in town. It's my understanding that even though there will still be, I think, more requested, if you add up all of these applications than the CPC has available to fund, that they would look favorably on $120,000 grant. This certainly is a priority project in town. It's an unsafe dam. There are concerns about flooding if it were to fail. And we are under this order from the state to fix it. So if we had the design and permitting moving forward at the end of 2020, I'm sure the state would recognize that and give us an extension on a deadline for fixing it. But the alternative of rebuilding it is five times as expensive, so it seems to be the best course of action is to take it down. And it doesn't, according to the engineers, there would be no downstream hazards in terms of reduced flow or more flooding downstream. So that's what I would propose to the selectmen, that we reduce the application to the CPC to 120 grand and take the $138,000 out of the town budget and let the manager decide what other priorities to fund with that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second. Discussion, David?
No discussion. Just a question. How much would be available this year in available CPC funding?
I believe, Roland's here, but I believe the number is about, about one and a half million. Or, well, I'll ask the man.
I should have been prepared for this question, but I'm not. I apologize. I can go down and look. But I believe it's at one point, four million altogether, give or take some, you know, between local receipts and state match, which is fairly low this year, and recaptures. But I can, I can check if it helps the conversation. I'm happy to do that.
I think that's probably close enough.
Okay.
What other, these are the town projects. I think CPC is expecting a $500,000 request from the Acton Housing Authority for 348 to 364 Main Street. That's a former Walker property. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And are there any other big items that are coming in from beyond the Housing Authority? And...
No, that's, that's the other big-ticket item, other than the open space set aside request. That is sort of an annually recurring thing, which is, this year is $400,000, although over the years, that number has varied a little bit.
John, I think the, there was one other application for, from a private individual, and that, that was withdrawn. It was for fairly small dollars for some work up in North Acton. That, that was withdrawn at this point.
Does the CPC want us to rank the town's requests?
I think that, that would be the most helpful. The, obviously, there's different categories here, but I think that if, if you, we could provide to the CPC some ideas to which ones we think are important. Even when you get down to things like, we've got two restoration projects on town structures, even if you just decided that you think one is a more high priority than the other, just so that they could get some sense of that. Otherwise, CPC will decide what's important.
Well, the library, I think, is more important immediately than the monument.
Based on, on what I've seen, I will agree with you.
David and I are under maximum pressure on that issue.
Any other thoughts? John, is this still money for a house next door?
We're not proposing any additional requests this year. We do, we did receive an earmark from the state for that project as well, which will help supplement the 170 you received last year from CPC. We're doing that work right now. We hope to do that selective demolition this summer. So we, we weren't ready.
Okay, okay. Any other?
I think we have, sorry, I think we have a motion on the table, though, first. Right? Didn't Peter move to do the, so we need to, either withdraw it or decide we're doing it all together, or do the...
All right, on the River Street master plan, 120 instead of 966?
I do have one final question on that, at least for me. The, Peter, in the beginning of your talk, you said we were, the state was mandating us be done by the end of this year, but then in the middle of your talk, you said, the engineers said it was going to take a year and a half. So are we, can we not do it until 2021? We can get started, but we can't finish it.
Right. And I'm assuming that if we get to the end of this year, we, we can go back to the state and say we're making, you know, as much progress as we can make. We, we put out, assuming CPC funds it, we'd have the money in April. And we put out a bid, get the design people and permitting people on board, and they're moving forward. I think the state's, what else can we do? We're moving as quickly as we can, really, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is on the River Street master plan?
Yeah, the motion is to reduce the 966,000 request to the CPC to 120,000 for a design and permitting, and eliminate the 138,000 line item in the town budget for funding this work, and have the town manager propose a, an alternative project to fund with that $138,000.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. And then do we want to postpone the Isaac Davis Monument for you?
The, what I was going to suggest is that we just go through these and we rate them, and it's just we might put that down as, as the number nine project.
Oh, okay.
And still keep it on the list.
Okay.
For discussion, but just put it at the bottom of the list.
Okay. So do you want to rank them?
I, I'd be happy to, to give it a stab of how I would rank them.
Do you want, do you have ones to...
I would like to address the question of ranking of the various projects. Joe Glennon, I'm a resident Willow Street and trustee of the Acton Memorial Library, which is a building dear to our hearts. It was funded by a private individual and donated to the town and accepted by the town to be maintained indefinitely. And the proposal, I believe, was presented by your own Public Works Department, and I've read the application, and it says this, "If this work is not completed, continued degradation of the mortar, brick, and brownstone will persist, allowing expansion between the bricks due to moisture freezing and thawing, and causing interior water damage to the building. However, without permanent repair and repointing, interior water damage is imminent." That's my argument. I can't imagine a, a building that has more, that more fully fulfills the intent of the Community Preservation Act. And so I urge you on behalf of the trustees to give it the priority that it needs. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you for those thoughts. I, I would come up with some ratings here, and some of the highest priorities that I would assign are the, the sort of the routine things that are required in order to keep the ship afloat. So I think my first priority would be the $58,000 for the administrative support. Without that, we can't raise the money to run the project. Along the same lines, the $65,000 for the housing services, very dependent upon that. It keeps our whole affordable housing program going. The, the third one, because it's near and dear to my heart, and it's very small dollars, I would put the historic restoration of historic streetscapes as priority three. And at that point, I would put the repointing and chimney restoration, the Memorial Library is priority four. The open space acquisition, I would put as a five. The housing program fund, I would put as a six. East Acton Village Green is, I would put as a seven. The lowered amount for the River Street project, I would put as an eight. Put the Gardner Field project as a nine. The Narrow Sports Pavilion as a 10. And the Davis Monument, I think, is something we could look at for next year, so I'd put that as an 11. See, that's just a quick way of doing it.
Discussion, John?
I trust Dean's good judgment on this.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm just a little concerned about the 53 River Street. I mean, it is, it is a, a safety issue, so if it doesn't get funded, we're going to have a problem.
I certainly, we could, certainly, it's kind of a jump ball. We could move it up to a seven, and we could switch between that and the Village Green. I think they're somewhat similar projects as far as being historic and rest, and recreation.
Yeah, I would agree with that change. David?
Yeah, this is a, a little complicated, a little complicated. You know, I would have put the Gardner Field Playground up higher. I think it's small money, and there's, there's a good return there. And, you know, the, did I, did I hear that you, oh, I see, you, so you, I just want to understand that, did you move the 53 River Street up to your priority seven, and the, the East Acton Village Green to priority eight?
Yes.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't object to that at all, but because there, the differences in the sizes of those things, is that, is that going to make a huge difference? You know, I, I think that, you know, anything below, well, I was trying to add things up here earlier, right? So if we, we, this had 2.2 million to, total to start with. If we save 800 some odd thousand in reduction on 53 River Street, but add a half a million dollars for the Walker property, we're already down, you know, we're, we're still half a million dollars over.
Yeah.
And so something's got to, got to go. And I think that those things that are in the second half of the, I mean, well, maybe this, if the Sports Pavilion goes, that, that does most of it. I'm just trying to figure out, even if you take them kind of in your order, and you, and you, you stop at 1.9 million, or, or 1.4 million, you know.
I'd, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with moving the Sports Pavilion down to 11 and the Davis Monument down to a 10. But I think, I think I agree with you. I think, you know, the way, whether we put the Sports Pavilion at a 10 or an 11, it's probably so far down on the list, it's probably going to get cut.
Yes.
And that, that brings us a lot closer to where we want to be.
And I'm, I'm actually, you know, I'm wondering whether...
A little bit about CPC process.
Whether we're ever a little bit nuanced about it for the, for the open space, if we should recommend a little bit lower number. I mean, I, I understand, and I'm liaison to that committee, basically, you know, buying land in town is expensive, right? They have a chunk of money, they have over two million dollars, I think. But buying a big chunk of land in town is, is expensive, and so, but there are a number of worthwhile things this year, and I wonder if that should be...
Let's see if Roland can shed some light.
Some of you have been, or still are, on the CPC. And you might recall that, you know, the CPC has, over the years, always tried to fund as many projects as possible. They've always been very appreciative of leveraging funds from other sources. And that also meant that, at least in the past, they haven't always funded the requested projects at the amount at which they are requested. So they have funded them at a lesser amount. You know, I can't speak for the CPC this year, but, you know, $500,000 for the Housing Authority, looking at that project, it could very well be that the CPC is going back and saying, "We'll fund this much this year to do that first portion of it, and come back next year for the second portion," because that happened in the past a lot, too. So I guess what I'm suggesting is, don't worry too much about, is it going to fit, and where is it going to go? I think, look, you know, look at the priorities for the town as you see them, and then let the CPC figure out how to make it work.
Good advice. Yes, comment?
I have a suggestion. Alyssa Nickel, School Street. Since we are removing $138,000 from the 53 River Street project, the library and the monument together are just over that at $147,000. So perhaps that money could be taken from one CPC application and put towards two other CPC applications. And I agree with, with Roland. And I agree with, with Roland that a few of these applicants are gonna come back next year to, to get funding, to apply for funding for, uh, further phases of their projects.
Thank you.
All right. The, uh, not to get into the weeds of CPC allocations, but one of the justifications for the Memorial Library project and the Davis Monument project is the good historic restoration projects. We're required to allocate 10% towards historic restoration projects. So if we were to take both of them out and fund them within the town budget, we'd still end up having to have set aside anyway. So we might as well at least get some of the historic restoration work done. And, you know, the, the tree planting with the historic streetscapes, that also counts as the historic restoration, so let John keep the money. He can find a good spot for it.
Okay, so let me, one is the town manager, two is the planning division, three historic streetscapes, four the library, five open space. Then I got lost.
Six is the ACHC.
ACHC, second one.
Okay, okay.
Seven is 53 River Street.
Right. Eight is the East Acton Village Green. Nine is Gardner Field. 10 is Nara. And 11 is Isaac Davis.
That's correct.
Okay.
On David's, um, comment, um, might we consider reducing the open space, um, set aside of 400 to 300 to free up monies to make this, to, you know, to capture some of the, the East Acton Village Green? And I'm particularly strong on Gardner Field, the Gardner Field Playground. And again, that's, you know, you know, small money. And we've generally funded very well the open space set aside throughout the years.
May I speak on that?
That, that makes, makes sense to, to me. Although, from what Roland said, that they, that may happen, the CPC committee may do that themselves.
Although they're looking for our input as to, so I think we should take advantage of that.
Tara?
According to my calculations, we're losing about 50 acres a year to building and we're preserving about one or two. So just to put that in perspective, I think that we're losing a lot of ground. I looked at the National Parks for National, whatever it is, and they rate the number of acres per resident, some percent, you know, .001 acres per. And we're slipping into the urban area. If we want to remain suburban or remain, as our master plan suggests, to preserve what rural character we have left, I think that we have to not reduce the open space set aside. Thank you.
To not reduce the open space set aside?
That's what I think, yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I just have a question about the process and that proposal. It used to be that the Open Space Committee did not come through the Board of Selectmen. They submitted their application directly to the CPC based on their own vote. When we had a presentation from them the last year, I was on the committee. I asked why that was and suggested that it's probably better for the Open Space Committee to submit it with all the other town proposals. So my basic question is, are you recommending that we actually reduce this? Or are we just recommending to the CPC that, that if they need to make cuts, that's where they ought to look?
Well, I suppose if it's a town of Acton project, it's in our auspices to send it in and with the number.
I, I think it is. I mean, that's, uh, that's kind of the same proposal I'm making about 53 River Street, but yeah.
So what are we saying? Four or three?
Um, three, David?
Sure, that would be...
That, that's your committee, so...
So, I, I, I think, you know, we have it as a priority five, which is up in the list and, which makes sense to me. It's not very far after the things that have to happen. And, um, so it's, we have it as very important, but, you know, it's also a big chunk of money. And there, so I, I would be fine with setting it to three.
Okay. Yes?
Miriam Lezak, High Street Acton, of course, Acton. And I'm also a library trustee. And I just very quickly want to thank you for prioritizing, giving the library chimney, giving, giving it a high priority. And it's just a really quick thanks.
Okay. Yes?
Jim Snyder-Grant again. So I should say that I'm, I'm on, I'm the, an associate member on the CPC. And just to reflect on the process, we're in the middle of getting presentations from each of the applicants and getting a lot of information that would, I think, help to weigh in on the dollar amounts and the priorities. The selectmen recommendations are gonna be key for that, but I just wanted to encourage you, where possible, to put things in the form of recommendations rather than, you know, to change the amounts before giving the CPC a chance to take the extra time that they take with all the different proposals to, to weigh them out. Thank you.
Okay. Are you current with the discussion on your list?
Yes, I am. The question right now is, is whether it's gonna be a recommendation from us for 300 or for $400,000 on the open space. I think everything else is pretty much locked down, just waiting for a vote.
So is everybody in agreement on the four to three?
Yeah.
And so we can just have a motion for that plus the order that we have on the table?
All right.
Okay.
Go.
All right. I move that the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen to Community Preservation Committee reflects the following priority. And Lisa, would it be helpful if I went through this again? Or not? Okay, I'll go through it again. Number one priority would be the administrative support. Number two priority would be the Housing Services Planning Division. Number three would be restoration of historic streetscapes, 15,000. Number four would be repointing and chimney restoration. Number five would be open space set aside at $300,000. Number six would be Community Housing Program Fund at 100,000. Number seven would be 53 River Street at 120,000. Number eight would be East Acton Village Green, full amount, 49802. Number nine would be Gardner Field, 30,000. Number 10 would be the Narrow Sports Pavilion Phase Two. And number 11 would be the Isaac Davis Monument Project.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you.
So this went in 300?
Sewer regulations and bylaws. David?
So, um, you know, based on the, the feedback we got, both, you know, at, at town meeting and before town meeting about, on the, on the sewer vote, um, I, I, there were a number of things that we, we were forced to do because of Acton, the way Acton's bylaws are. You know, there was not as much latitude the committee had as they would have wanted. And so what I would propose is that, for the next few months, that the committee concentrate on recommendations back to the board for how to change the bylaws to be able to respond to the issues that people brought up, both before town meeting and at town meeting. And there's this piece of paper in your, your, um, packet that has, it's in an email from me.
Could we see it?
Um, there, there are, um, three areas that, um, uh, that we, we, uh, we should ask the committee to look into and make recommendations. First is ways to lower the betterments. That was the single biggest issue that people had, was that the betterment cost was too It's likely that that would, you know, require changes to the bylaws to allow a general revenue contribution to, to future projects. But any other ideas the committee might have, of course, would be, okay? The second thing would be to, um, be able to avoid betterments on sewers which are really not intended for hookups. Uh, you know, they'd like force, force mains. These were discussed in possibly hooking up the school in Phase One. But there may be similar things like that in the future. I mean, effectively, we would have to do this anyway. If we put in a force main, we'd have to better everybody and then everyone could be abated. State law would require us to abate them if they didn't get the value of the hookup. So, but it, this, that change would allow the, you know, avoiding the, bettering them and then abating them, uh, uh, situation. And, and finally, the suggestion that we figure out a way financially to be able to have people pay after they hook up to the sewer system rather than being bettered before. So, um, uh, those three areas. And I, so, um, my proposal is here is to ask the committee to propose bylaw changes back to the board that we would put on a future town meeting warrant. I suspect this couldn't be done for the annual town meeting, so it would be sometime after that.
Would you consider getting bylaws from communities of a similar size?
Yeah, one of the things I think that would, you know, the committee would have to do is to, um, research how other towns do this. I, I'm aware of how some other towns do it, but we, you know, there needs to be a more systematic data gathering for how, you know, towns that are similar to us fund their sewers. So I, I know of instances, but, you know, I, we don't have, you know, good data on, on a variety of towns.
But it would be helpful to look at other towns' sewer bylaws.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that would be part of the, the task here in, in making recommendations and for how to change the bylaws.
Dean?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I had a discussion with one individual and described their understanding of a, of a similar situation in, I believe, down on the Cape, where the, you didn't have to pay the betterment when the pipe went in, but if you didn't avail yourself of the opportunity after a certain number of years, 10 years or something, basically, your property would never be allowed to be accessed by sewer. So basically grandfathering it. I think this might be a good way of, of thinking about it. If you've got, if somebody's got a lot that might have some potential for being redeveloped, put a second house in, and you say, "No, I'm not going to ever do that. I'm going to make sure nobody ever does it in the future." I think that might be reassuring with the number of people concerned about overdevelopment in West Acton. So I think, and I can probably get you some more information as to what town that was, but I believe it was down on the Cape and it, it did, um, give people some reassurance that you wouldn't have a whole lot of lot splits unless you really wanted to. Whereas right now, you know, with a really high betterment, people are being forced into real serious consideration of splitting lots, which I don't think is something anybody wants to do. So just a suggestion.
Tara? Oh. Peter?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I, you're talking about a new committee or is this still the committee that you're using now to, or were using in West Acton or...
I would just recommend using the, the committee we have now. We could change the name if we wanted to.
Okay. Was it, is it a wider representation from across the town, other than just West Acton people?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm familiar with the make-up of the committee.
Most of the people on the committee today, I think, there are only two members that are actually, that were in the proposed West Acton, um, district.
Okay. But if somebody doesn't ever hook up and therefore doesn't pay a betterment, that drives up the betterment for everybody else, doesn't it?
Well, that, that, you know, this is not meant to be conclusions or specifics, right? This is asking the committee to come up back to the board with proposed bylaw changes, which we would either put on a future warrant or not, depending on our judgment on what they recommended.
Okay. I mean, what Dean is suggesting is, I guess, they make that decision upfront at the beginning. Okay. As opposed to not, okay. I, I just have a basic question. Is a force main, what is force main? Is that, is that a term of art?
It's a, it's a high-pressure main.
High-pressure, so you have to have pumps, as opposed to a gravity system where it's just...
The, the force indicates big pumps, like municipal pumps.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, I mean, um...
Can I step up?
Um, I, you know, I, I think there were, you know, you know, two pieces, or two takeaways that, that I had coming out of the vote on December, you know, 17, um, that it was clear, no sewers in West Acton. That vote was, was overwhelming. But in, in, to, in, in support of David, I mean, those are, you know, very real issues that, um, caused, you know, the sewer article to go down, the cost to, you know, individual property owners, you know, within the district and what remedies can there, can there be to alleviate that? But there's also a, you know, a larger, larger question that we really need more information about sewers versus septic. And, you know, that would involve, you know, a, you know, a community discussion because there's so much conflicting information out there that led to, you know, such, you know, hostility, each side saying, "You're, you're putting out misinformation, oh, you're putting out misinformation." And I really think we, we have to have a, you know, a real, you know, discussion about that. And, you know, one of the problems we have with a mean and lean town staff is we don't have anybody on staff who's a wastewater, you know, expert. So it's sewers versus septic, what, you know, what do we need to know? What are the environmental risks in town? And so I, I think the, you know, you know, we need some sort of, you know, organized effort to, or, or mechanism to, to really have that discussion. Because if we don't have that discussion and really come to some understandings, we're, we're just gonna be fighting the same, you know, sewer wars of, of 2019 and, you know, the sewer wars of, of 10 years ago and Spencer Tuttle Flint and 1990. And so, you know, I think we need to put some mechanism together to have a really large, you know, community discussion. That could be done calmly and thoughtfully. And, and I think if we, we have an opportunity to do it now, and let's not miss it.
Yes?
Okay, thank you. And my guys are a Tuttle and a Spencer Flint from 10 years ago. I'd like to have this sewer committee dissolved because I don't think they have the talent to actually find the problem. For, you know, for two years, they believed the, the maps that Woodburn and Corin brought them, which are really false, were not accurate at all. They thought there was high water in, in West Acton, but there isn't. And nobody challenges these, these assumptions. And I think the committee itself doesn't know to do that. And I think the committee itself doesn't know to do that. And for Spencer Tuttle Flint, we had our own committee, the One Committee, and we challenged everything. We went and looked it up. You know, when I brought information to your committee, Dave, or I think you were a part of the committee at the time, how there really wasn't a pollution problem in West Acton, nobody asked for the data. You know, I would have checked my data. I would have, if you have a map that shows there's no pollution, where's your data? And then I'd go check it under the Board of Health and see if it was really correct. But nobody does that. And until you have people that are aggressive, I think you're never going to get the right answers. So, I think you need people of different personalities and different talents than we presently have on the committee. That's just my thinking. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
What type of committee would you have in mind as a successor?
I would put people, you know, like Chris Williams here. You know, she was very instrumental in getting data out from the Board of Health. She spent days doing that. She has a good mind and she writes well, and she has good thinking, and she lives in West Acton. You know, my, I'm a scientist in nature, or that's my job, and our whole job is to tell another scientist he's wrong. It's sort of like lawyers, only in the science field. And so, I don't believe anybody until I have data. If you don't have data, you don't have anything. And so, I think there are people in the town that really have the talents to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Williams. I, just in answer to your question, I think the kind of committee that would be appropriate would be a committee that would look at wastewater in general, not just a committee that would have the purpose of implementing sewers, but one that would take a balanced look at different approaches. And also look at really out-of-the-box solutions that could be recommended, like, say, gray water recycling systems and things like that. You know, be a source of information for the town, a source of expertise, and a source of outreach to the community to educate them about these alternative systems. And how to go about making such a committee would be to look for people that want sewers, people that don't want sewers, and get a variety of viewpoints on the committee rather than a committee staffed entirely by people who are looking to achieve a specific end before having a, kind of thrashing it out amongst them to see what the best solution is.
Thank you.
Alyssa Nichols, School Street. I just want to follow up on Chris's comment. I don't think that there should be a sewer committee. I think there should be a wastewater committee. I want to share an article with all of you from an industry magazine. It's called Water and Wastes Digest, and it's actually an article from 2000, so it's 20 years old. It's very exciting. I was really struck by the perception when I got involved in this sewer war, as selectman Benson put it, by the perception that supporting sewers is a way to be in the 21st century. Across meetings and social media, that idea was presented, and that those who were arguing for the adequacy of onsite wastewater treatment were somehow backwards or living in the previous century. So, I didn't have any knowledge of sewers versus septic until I started doing some research and discovered that the technological advancements and innovations actually were not happening in the sewer industry. They were happening in the onsite decentralized wastewater treatment industry. So, I made copies of these, of this article for all of you. I'm also planning to hopefully circulate these copies to, this article to the Acton Water District, the Sewer Committee, possibly the Green Acton Water Committee. But it references several cities and towns that are using recirculating gravity filters, absorption systems, dual leach fields, letting one leach field rest for four to five years and switching to the other, sequencing batch reactors, UV disinfection, iron impregnated sand, extended aeration units, and something called a nibbler system, which sounds like it's from Harry Poty, Harry Potter. Poty, I can't believe I just said that. It's an aerobic treatment that was specifically designed to treat restaurant grease, and I know that restaurants in West Acton were one of the reasons to push for sewers there. It also describes new management practices. So, apparently, utility companies, electric companies and water companies are taking on the management aspect of onsite innovative wastewater systems. Even the suggestion that was being presented, that the town should advocate for sewer expansion because it's more attractive or less intimidating to people who are moving here to a more rural area from the cities or the younger generation, I thought that that was pretty misguided, because from what I've read and people that I've spoken with, people are getting back in touch with the earth. Their young people are turning to farming, they're turning to cohousing communities, they're turning to living in yurts and composting toilets. Many millennials are not buying houses, they're renting instead. So, they are really looking to be more self-reliant, growing their own food, homesteading, that sort of thing. So, do I give these articles to Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. So, I agree with John. I feel like either the sewer committee should have its charter changed dramatically or dissolved completely. I'm not sure if that's exactly what John was saying, but I feel like the larger picture needs to be looked at, so that it's not just the sewer committee coming up with a new proposal on how to push sewers to the same people. And it should be about, do we even want sewers? What other options are there? Small shared systems. I agree with what these guys are saying, that the makeup of the committee needs to change. I feel like the idea that the sewer company decides what's needed and then goes about using the sewer committee effectively as an advocacy group, at least in my view, with all due respect. I just also want to make one more comment about the lot split. It's not just triggered by the betterment, but it's triggered by an opportunity. So, if sewers come and it's cheaper to split that lot, excuse me, if there's more money to be made in development, then it's not just, the betterment could be free and it still could split those lots. And in fact, we did a bit of a survey around the people that I know that worked very much against the sewers, and they started out talking about the betterment being the issue. And in the end, when they started looking at the possible build-out, et cetera, et cetera, they started to say things like, "Well, if it was free, they wouldn't even want it." So, I think that rather than having a committee that's pushing an end, that we have a committee that weighs options and looks at the data and is realistic about what people want and don't want. Thank you.
Okay. So, I want to be clear that this last committee was constituted to put sewers in West Acton before me, you know, but, you know, that was the charge of this committee. I'm not suggesting that. And in fact, I think that any future projects or not future projects are, you know, priorities for future boards, right? What I'm, I would propose today is that we just ask this committee, in the meantime, to just propose changes to bylaws, right? And not be working on any project specifically.
Right. And review other towns.
Yes. And review other towns, as you say, to figure out how other towns do this and propose changes back to the board. As I said, I don't think this could be done in time for the annual town meeting. It would be time for some town meeting after that. And then, whatever we did in future, whatever, you know, if we have another committee with a specific charge, or another committee with a general charge, or no committee at all, that's, you know, a decision for a future board.
All right. I guess that was my confusion, because I always thought of it as the West Acton Sewer Advisory Committee. So, it doesn't make sense to come up with a new charge for a much broader charge to the committee?
Sure, that would be fine.
I think, given, you know, the, you know, you know, the outcome of the Article III vote, you know, that we have to listen to what the citizenry, you know, said. And I think it might be good for us to, you know, put it on pause until we meet again. A lot of comments came in tonight that were, you know, thoughtful and constructive on approaches. And let, I don't think there's any need, we're not under any time constraints, let's go home, think about it, and come back at our meeting on January 27th and talk further about, you know, what might be the best approach for going forward. And I just, what I just, you know, don't want to see is we, you know, go down a path that's interpreted as, you know, here's a backdoor way to sewers, and we're back in the to-ing and fro-ing of, you know, what people are really up to. I think, you know, the comments here are, let's have an open discussion, let's get more information, and, you know, let's, you know, make it community-wide. And I think that's really the, you know, the better way to go. But let's pause it for now and, you know, talk further and discuss again as to how best to proceed on the 27th.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Hold for the 27th. Oh, Regulatory Agreement and Sewer Betterment Request, 184 Main Street.
So, this was a consent article last time that I asked to hold. I wasn't trying to, you know, make any statement about this particular development. I needed some time to gather some information for myself. I do think that also for a future meeting, that we need to address the privilege fees for the existing sewer district. Privilege fees are 20 years old and way too low. And, but, in the meantime, I have no objection to moving forward with this particular request. You know, I was concerned about the delay in payment, delay in paying the privilege fees until occupancy, but, and just to add a few questions about that. In the meantime, I've, you know, been able to satisfy myself as to the answers. So, I'm happy to talk further about it, you know, if anybody here has any questions, but I have no more objection.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Mark O'Hagan, developer of 184 Main Street. And I know previously it was requested in conjunction with the Engineering Department for the deferral of the sewer payment. So, from my understanding, it was a relatively common occurrence, so I just wanted to be available to answer any questions that may come up. I appreciate your consideration of it, and if that's something that's acceptable to the board, then, you know, that is the request that we would make, would be for the deferral. So, and as I understand it, we would, there's no reduction in the fee. We actually pay interest on the amount of value. So, I think ultimately more money goes into the town with the deferral. It just, it's more of just a, you know, cash flow issue with us paying later instead of paying now. We essentially don't borrow the money. So, if that is available, we certainly like to proceed with it.
If no one else has anything to ask, I would move that we approve the request for deferral.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
And then the other item, I didn't, I don't know if you were looking at them at both the regulatory agreements, which are the standard documents provided by DHCD, that kind of set the, you know, the regulatory basis for the affordability of the homes, for how the affordable homes are resold in the future, establishing which homes are the affordable ones, and establishing the parameters for the cost certification and the dividend aspect. That's all within the regulatory agreement that was submitted to the board, where this was a local initiative program. The town actually signs off, accepting that. So, the town will sign it, we will sign it as the developer, and DHCD will countersign it and send us all a copy back. But those documents, it's a standard form document. We essentially just fill in the blanks. So, we didn't make any changes to it. So, presumably, the town would be okay with it. I'm sure you've seen them in the past, but--
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I, just to make, tie a bow around this, and I'd move that the board agree to sign the regulatory agreements that had been presented prior, just so that this thing's all done.
Okay. Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your continued support. We have taken down the House that I think everybody was happy to see go, and we'll be starting construction soon. So, thank you very much.
So, question?
What?
So, I think it's very wise to reconsider charging betterments from, you know, a couple decades ago. And I look forward to, especially before Powder Mill Place or any large projects come forward, I think it's really important to get a handle on what an appropriate betterment would be, because even if you charged the today's rates, you'd pay for half of the sewer study, for example. And I think it's important, as we look forward to a refresh, a required refresh, that is probably millions of dollars, to do that sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay. Dog licenses. Is there anything new on this?
The item number eight is related to, sorry, nine, is related to one-day licenses for consumption of alcohol and public properties. The board issues one-day licenses, and apparently there are bylaws that limit which properties it can do so. And Selectman Charter mentioned that this is something that we should look at for this coming town meeting, is any changes we want to make to it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, so, this, the present bylaw, Section E42, was passed some years ago. It's extremely restrictive as far as what public properties the board could allow one-day liquor licenses at. One example is, it just says the Senior Center. Now, the Senior Center has since moved. So, do we mean the new Senior Center, or do we mean the Senior Center that existed 20 years ago when we passed this bylaw? I believe that there have been some inadvertent situations where one-day liquor licenses were granted for locations that were prohibited under this bylaw. So, I'd just like to clarify that. I would think that we just eliminate, see, the packet today gives us the bylaw, and there's a highlighted section. I think probably if we just go through whatever process we need to, to eliminate that highlighted section, and basically leave it up to the Selectman's prerogative to decide what appropriate locations publicly owned for one-day licenses. And a lot of these things are, for instance, a, you know, could be a situation with a farmer's market, where they might want to have a tasting for hard cider or wine. That, right now, we couldn't actually do that, because the farmer's market is not the Senior Center at Narrow Park, it's on Pearl Street. There have been other situations in West Acton, some of the playgrounds, where we've wanted to encourage those sort of community activities. So, it's just trying to clean this thing up and make it comply with actual practice.
John?
So, if the board would like us to bring something forward, we can work council to identify if this change would do it, or if there's other changes that they would recommend to, what I believe to be the intent is not prohibit the board from issuing one-day licenses on public properties, other than those listed here. on public properties other than those listed here. So I can do that if that's the will of the board.
I think that's a good idea.
Yep.
So can we do this? One-day alcoholic license?
I would, I presume this is the former Senior Center?
This is for a one-day, this is the Acton Recreation and Boston Defense, at the Acton Recreation Department Building, two indoor winter concerts, January 17th and February 8th, from 6:00 to 10:00. And you have to be 21 years old to come.
I don't believe that made it on the agenda for tonight, anyway.
No, but Lisa misplaced it.
No, I got it on, I got it on Saturday.
Okay.
The event is on, the 17th. It was already posted. Is that it?
Right.
Yeah. So it wasn't expected.
So is there a motion?
So what can we do if it's not on the agenda? We can't deal with it, can we? I mean, but, okay.
The discussion?
It wasn't posted as some, do you think it comes under issue items that came up since the agenda was posted?
The request is a one-day license for an event at the Rec Center up on the Hill.
Right.
And you're saying it's already been publicly put out there that these functions are going to take place?
We can regroup on this one.
So we're through with nine?
I am.
Okay. And now, Big Bird Memorial.
Right. Let me just speak to this. I think I asked for this to be put on the agenda. This was also asked by a citizen. who kind of denigrated him for playing with puppets. So I think that might even be an educational piece that could be incorporated in part of this. But I think we could put a task force together, and it's entirely appropriate that the town somehow recognizes contribution to all of mankind, really, so.
Well, I met at Danny's place today, and the students are looking for a project. So this might be something that they would be interested in.
Mike Majors of the Finance Committee had a wonderful idea to name No Name Road in the Roach Brothers Carol Spiny Way.
I know that Dean has mentioned he saw him perform a puppet show, and Bill Clower was talking about how he used to perform at the South Acton Congregational Church also, so.
Well, when we think about what is Acton, we could have... Staff. Does that agree?
That's something certainly that I'm sure will get some people excited to participate in. I'm just wondering what your expectation is for a timeline?
Six months.
Okay. If that works, thank you.
Okay. Consent items. 11, approved meeting minutes, December 6, 2019. Approved amended meeting minutes, September 17, 2018, January 7, March 6, April 22, and April 30, 2019. Approved committee appointment and Cadillac Associate Member Town Meeting Improvements Committee term to expire April 2, 2020. Approved committee appointment, Leo Farchman, Associate Member Board of Assessors, term to expire June 30, 2023. Approve a one-day alcoholic beverage license in the Shoba Valley Nevis Club, January 11, 2020, Nagog Woods Clubhouse. Accept gift recreation department from Middlesex Savings Bank for $1,500 to support production costs for the 2020 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. 17, accept gift recreation department from Emerson Hospital for $750 to support production costs for the 2020 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. 18, accept gift recreation department from Westford Cultural Council for $200 to support Kids Music Fest. 19, accept gift recreation department from the Chelmsford Cultural Council for $1,500 to support Kids Music Fest. 20, accept gift recreation department from Roach Brothers for $3,000 to support the 2020 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. 21, accept gift recreation department from Sorrento's Pizza for $2,000 to support production costs of the 2020 Summer Concert Series and Events. 22, accept gift recreation department from Heather Wilson for $50 to support construction of a dog park in Acton. 23, accept gift recreation department from Susan Mitchell Hart and David E. Hart for $100 to support construction of a dog park in Acton. 24, accept gift recreation department from the Miracle League of Massachusetts for a combined total of $84,756.19 toward construction costs of the Narrow Sports Pavilion. 25, accept gift recreation department from multiple donors for a combined total of $34,925 toward donated material and labor for construction of the Narrow Park Sports Pavilion. 26, accept gift recreation department from Danny's Place for $500 to support the 2020 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. 27, accept gift Council on Aging from Marjion and Catherine Kurczuski for $50 toward buildings' furnishings. Is there a motion?
Okay, so motion to approve consent items 11 through 27 inclusive. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a meeting, a motion to adjourn?
Will we adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.